Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of October 23rd, 2025. We're getting started a little bit late after some technical difficulties. The video camera here in council chambers is not working. But in person here are Cameron Roach, Carolyn Mish, myself, Jana White, Rich Baker, and Sam Taylor. This is going to be a hybrid meeting. We have some members of the board online as well as here in person, so we will take roll call votes. I have a couple of items on the agenda for this evening. The first, before we get to those, however, we traditionally start our meetings with public comment on anything not on the evening's agenda. So is there anybody who would like to make comment about something not on the agenda? Seeing none. When Carolyn is ready, we will move to the first item on our agenda. Which is a continuation from June 12th and June 26th and August 28th and September 25th. Hearing for a site plan review by Michael Schaefer at 106 Industrial Drive. The applicant does not appear to be present. So, any information on that, Carolyn?
I don't know if communication got crossed. I mean, I've been in communication with the applicant over the last three days and the most recently this morning. So he was aware that this was being continued. I think maybe he misinterpreted when I said that I think that we can close the hearing that he felt like. And he is in Albany, so maybe he thought he didn't need to come. You all can have a conversation about the meeting without having the applicant here. I mean, you were waiting for the stormwater calculations to be completed, the area of disturbance, to know whether or not this actually would trigger a separate stormwater permit, in which case you couldn't close the hearing until the DPW had issued a separate stormwater permit. So some of that issue has been ironed out and enough so that I think you could close the hearing and issue a permit. They still need to go to the Conservation Commission for a permit, and this has been continued since June on multiple occasions. So my recommendation, even though the applicant is not here, that I can give more information and recommend conditions. And, you know, if they're not acceptable, which I actually relayed the conditions to the applicant this afternoon, like suggested conditions. But if they're not acceptable, they can always appeal. They still need to go to Conservation Commission, so. You know, I think my recommendation was, would be to let the process go to the next level for Conservation Commission, because I think you all were pretty much, I mean, the, all the issues you had discussed from the first meeting had been addressed in revised plans. So there was bike storage and some lighting issues and landscaping, so those have been addressed, and we really were just waiting for the stormwater.
So I would be perfectly frank and say that because we didn't get a staff memo and didn't get any notes, I just assumed this was going to be continued again and didn't review the files. And since it's been since June, the project is not fresh in my mind. So personally, I would not feel comfortable voting on it, not because I think that there's anything wrong with it, but because I don't, I don't feel like I have the information fresh at hand. So if we were to put it to a vote, I would abstain. I'm very happy for other people to carry forward the conversation, but I'm just not up to date enough to participate fully in the conversation tonight.
I was having similar thoughts to you, actually, Jana. So I would, I, I think would abstain rather than vote no?
Yes, because I, I would only vote no if I felt that there was something about the project that didn't meet the criteria, so I would abstain from the vote because, because of my own preparedness.
Because it's just, you know, I know it would be good to move, move it forward, but, but I think previously we made decisions to wait on it, and nothing's changed, so why would we change our decision? I guess it's the way I'm looking at it.
Would you want to take a straw poll from everybody, sort of what they're feeling?
Sure. Other folks here, Stacy, Chris online, Cameron and Sam here in person.
So, I was not on the board June 12th or June 26th. I was present for the August 28th and September 25th hearings. But I honestly don't recall ever seeing a site plan for this project. I don't know if that was presented previously in one of those June meetings. Or if I have missed something since joining the board, but I, I frankly haven't seen a site plan for this project either. So would also not feel comfortable voting on it.
Okay, yeah, well, and without Cameron, I think we wouldn't have a quorum for a vote anyway, right?
Probably not.
If we're gonna, if three of us are gonna.
You might, yeah, and Stacy was raising her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stacy.
Yeah, I think I, I did not review the file, because I also thought, just looking at the agenda, I thought it would be a continuation, so. I hate to continue it again, but I'd like to look at the file before voting on it, just to refresh my memory.
Okay. So what I can, that's fair, and I just, as background, I want, whoops. That's not very nice. I guess I don't really need to see this. So I, just so you know, what, there's we had continued it for a month so that there could be at least two weeks for review by DPW. La, a week ago, we, neither DPW nor our me, or I, had received any information from the applicant. So I pinged him and said, we gave you this long lead time. And then immediately he responded back, so as of last Friday, but didn't really address DPW's comments. There were some modifications to the area of disturbance, it went up. And then Monday, I want to say, late Monday, early Tuesday, I looked at the plans and noticed that there was still yet more area on the site that hadn't been included in the area of disturbance. And so I sent that back. So I think it wasn't until Tuesday afternoon that we, so meeting two days ago, that we had sort of a final area of disturbance. There were some other comments that were not addressed from DPW's perspective, but we, I talked, I talked with DPW Director and the Stormwater Manager and sort of came up with the idea that be, if, you know, and just this afternoon at four o'clock, DPW signed a waiver saying it's under an acre. You can move forward, but you can't go beyond, you know, if you start inching up and you get over to an acre, over an acre during construction, the, you know, you'll have to stop everything and come back in for a permit. So that was clear, but that came in late this afternoon, and that's why there was this delay. That's why I didn't send anything to you, because I was waiting to see what was gonna happen. And so we sort of came to this path where, you know, we could condition the other data that needed to be given to, to prove that pre and post-construction runoff would be equal before issuance of a building permit. Frankly, that same information needs to go to the Conservation Commission, so they're gonna have to do this anyway in front of the Conservation Commission, so. That's why I thought, okay, maybe we can get this going. Totally understand, but I just wanted you to know why you all didn't receive an updated plan, because you literally just got it, you know?
You did what you could. I think, honestly, the, the lack of engagement on the part of the applicant says to me, you know, we shouldn't be like hurrying this along when they're not even there, you know? And as you said, they haven't been there a bunch, so let's make sure they understand. This is, this is seriously trying to avoid impacts that we don't, the city doesn't want to have.
Yeah, and I will say, they, they could go ahead and file and actually be on the Conservation Commission agenda on the 13th, which would be the rec, I would recommend you continue it to the 13th. And so then, basically. It shouldn't be. I mean, they're gonna need that permit anyway, so. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I make a motion to continue this review till September 13th at seven.
November.
November 13th at seven.
My second.
Any other discussion? Okay, because we're hybrid, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Rich? Sam? Cameron? Stacy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so we will continue to November 13th? Great. And Cameron, I believe, Carolyn, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if the initial, if you were not here at the initial hearing, in order for you to vote, you need to watch the recording of that hearing, or you can participate in the conversations, but not actually vote when we, when it actually comes for a vote. And so the recording should be accessible on the Northampton Open Media YouTube page.
Yeah.
I can send you the date.
Is that just a, like, I watch it and tell you that I've watched it? And, okay.
Okay. Great. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is discussion of zoning changes, including tweaks, potential tweaks to Central Business Side and Gateway districts.
And I will, if I can say, I need to get caught up on this, so a good review would be really helpful. I'm very interested, but.
Sure.
There isn't much record, just look at it.
Yeah, so do you want me to launch it? So the, in 2022, City Council adopted the Form Based Code, which is a slightly, it's, it's, it has a lot of not just use-based requirements in downtown. The, what was previously the general, so that was Central Business District plus what was previously the General Business District that went down to, I can pull up a map to show, but it went down to Con's and Pleasant, the roundabout there, and up to on King Street to North Street, the intersection there with the Signal, Signalized Intersection with Dunkin' Donuts. I'm sorry, it goes beyond that to the Bike Path Crossing. Sorry, misspoke. So that originally was, that section on the north end was referred to as Entrance Business. So basically, we pulled all the Central Business and General Business and Entrance Business districts into one umbrella, Central Business District, but with sub-districts. So we have Central Business Core, Central Business Side Street, and Central Business Gateway. And I will pull up the map for this. The other Form Based Code area that was adopted was for Florence Center, that had previously been General Business District, which also, as I mentioned, was the area from Holyoke Street South to the Roundabout, had been General Business District. So Florence Center was then also divided into two sort of sub-districts. So we have Florence Village Center and Florence Village General. So over, since that time, there've been a few permits that have come in to the Planning Board for Review in different parts of, actually, we haven't had any permits in the Central Business Core. So hang on a second, let me pull that up. Should have been, had this on my screen already. And through those permits that have been reviewed, there've been some, you know, I think, questions regarding need for clarification or just debate about what the intention was for, and, and so I think some of those things included, I think, early on what, so a lot, there were some little issues that had risen up, scattered through a couple of projects, and then when it really sort of became, there were a couple of hot button issues for a couple of projects, the Three Elm Street project on the, at the St. Mary's Church, and then Ten Holly Street. So discussions about height and sort of the boundary line between the Side Street District and the Residential District. There were issues about maybe design requirements for covered garages or garage structures, and also footprint, and what triggers special permit. And so through, particularly, in particular, the Ten Holly Street project, there was a law discussion with the City Council members, legislative matters members, and the Planning Board about whether or not some tweaks might be appropriate for this Central Business Side Street District and potentially Gateway District. So, ooh, this map is not good, so I'm gonna go here to Google Earth and show you the, where the boundaries are. And then you had a meeting just a couple of weeks ago that had, was about adding solar canopy over parking, existing parking, and that triggered a site plan, because that's part of the Side District, actually, all three Form Based Code districts require a Planning Board review of solar canopies. However, everywhere else in the zoning is sort of encourages covering asphalt with solar canopy. And so I think that's also something to think about, I think, so that we could talk about the original reason for having that trigger site plan. Maybe that should just be by right. So there are a couple of things that I think.
District, who's that one in?
The Side Street, Central Business Side. So let me pull this up. And I'm gonna take the lines off. I'm gonna share my screen and I think I'm just gonna have to. Okay, we're gonna have to sort of walk through this a little bit. I'm gonna try to show you. These colors are not very saturated, but I'll just show you the screen.
Carolyn, is there an expectation that people on Zoom can see what you're doing? I see there's a CT Chambers graphic that says something about Northampton City Council, and then you have your own, but there's nothing shown on that.
Can you see that?
Which?
You just changed.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. We can't change that splash screen, but we can share, so.
Minimize that black thing by the upper left corner?
Yes. You mean the thing with Chris's face? Okay. Okay, so I'm just gonna zoom in a little bit. The line, this is not as saturated as I wanted it to be, but I'll just walk through a little bit. Basically, the core, Central Business Core is, goes from the Bike Path here on the southern side, Pleasant Street and the Bike Path, and wraps around Strong Avenue, and then and takes into account these, these corners at Market and Holly is sort of a node of the Central Business Core. And then it's all of this Main Street is core, all the way up to State Street, and then basically around State Street. It's one, it's one parcel deep, essentially, fronting Main Street is all core, and everything behind the Main Street is the Side Street District. And all the way to, so if we're going south, Side Street District in here and over here by Maple Avenue and up along Old South Street, Crafts Avenue. And then south of the rail trail is Side Street till you get to Holyoke Street, and then it's Gateway down to Con Street. And Gateway all the way over here on, on this side of Con Street, all that pink is Gateway. And then this pink area, pink here, is Side Street as well. So when that goes down all of Holly Street on this, on the railroad side. And then this area here, I'll zoom in, is the former church property and the parking lot. And so all of this pink area is CB Side District, and that abuts, the yellow is residential, urban residential C in all cases. And so this Central Business Side Street District goes up Market Street a little bit up to, just past, this is Graves Avenue, so just this part on the railroad side, and across the street is urban residential C. And then going up King Street, it's Side Street, the, the last parcel in the Core District is the Registry of Deeds, former Registry of Deeds Building, so this parcel here is in Core. And then you move up, and this is all Side Street District up until North Street, and then it becomes Gateway north up to the Bike Path Crossing, essentially. So all of this, the old Honda lot is all Gateway. So the difference in those three, there're, there're a couple, there're a variety of differences, and they relate to sort of what their historic zoning had been, so. The Core District is that sort of core historic buildings fronting Main Street, Pleasant and King, essentially. And any new project within the Core also has to get a permit from the Central Business Architecture Committee. And that was sort of the original jurisdiction of Central Business Architecture. Outside of Core, so in the Side Street and Gateway Districts, the Planning Board is the jurisdictional body for all expansions. And Central Business Architecture does not review those permits. And so the idea is really, so you have a little bit of, you have step back, so outside the Core, which is the most intense, essentially most intense portion of the district where the heights are 70 feet. You know, you can have any mix of uses, it's very, it's probably has the same uses are allowed in all of the Central Business Districts. But you have different form elements in the Core versus Side and Gateway, and you have those step back, or step backs of height, building height, after 50 feet, you have to step back in till you get to 70 feet. And also there are buffer requirements, because where you abut a residential district because of the nature of that, that area adjacent to the urban residential C ring that is around that, whereas in the Core District, you're just abutting other commercial, either CB Side or CB Gateway.
Which one has the set, the height, the setback at a certain height?
Both Gateway and Side Street.
Okay.
So one of the things that came up is, you know, a step back is, is appropriate, I think, is what I heard, but maybe the heights shouldn't be 70 feet, or and also that maybe the buffer treatment should be evaluated to see. So there's a 20-foot, essentially a setback with buffer on the edge that abuts the urban residential C District. Or you can reduce that if you're putting, you know, down to 10 feet, if you have a fence or some other sort of heavy landscaping.
What's the minimum required setback for a building in that situation?
In a URC District, the minimum side setback is 10 feet. Yeah, but in the Central Business District, it's zero feet unless you're abutting the residential, right?
So, right now, it's a 10-foot setback. Plus, at what height is there an additional?
At 50 feet, you step back 10 feet.
50 feet, setback 10 feet. And then any more than that?
No.
Is that 70 feet to the highest point, or is that 70 feet to, like, the center, to the, like, the middle of the roof?
So it would be, the measurement for anywhere in the city is to the midpoint of a gabled roof or to the roof deck of a flat-roofed building.
And, and does that include, so, mechanicals on top?
Mechanicals are not part of the height. But they need to be hidden behind, like, a parapet or something.
Okay, so theoretically, you could go up another 10 feet with a mechanical buil, building on top of that.
Yeah, with the parap, what you just called a parapet?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm, I'm just saying, like, theoretically, you could easily have an 80.
You have a giant mechanical system.
Well, I mean, that's actually not that giant, honestly. I mean, you'd have to build a room around a.
Right, but it wouldn't be for the entire footprint. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, it's not like you're raising the roof across the entire thing for mechanicals.
No, no, I get it. And it's still like, yes.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I'm just, and what is the point of the the fence? I mean, I, I, I say that, like, as, like, if something, okay, so you build this very large building, and then they have to put up a six-foot fence. So like, everyone else above the second floor can see it? I mean, I just, I'm just trying, I'm not trying to, I just don't really get it.
Yeah, so.
That's, that's where I was at, Sam, with the fence. Because you put up a six-foot fence, and then all of a sudden, you can go from the 10-foot setback, or from a 20-foot setback to a 10-foot setback to residential, and I didn't really like that with a 50-foot building, plus 50-plus foot building.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even, it's not an issue of like or not like, I just don't really understand the point.
No, it's not, you don't have to put up a fence. It's, if you put up a fence, then your building can be 10 feet closer to the residential.
Yeah.
Or some other buffer. So trees would be more appropriate, because they can grow taller than 10 feet, and they provide shading. But I think originally, so we have that langu, I think the only rationale I can tell you is that it's a carryover for the way we've treated a lot of buffer situations, and it's about pedestrian scale and people at this level. And if you're in a house on the first floor and you have a building next to you, you know, a fence at that level creates some screening and separation. But, yeah, I mean, obviously, if you're above 30 feet, then, you know, a fence is down here, and you're still in your house, and you'll see the building. It's not meant to mask the building.
No, I, that part I get. I, I just wonder if it's a remnant of a time when in this district, if you're building such a tall building, you're building a commercial. in this district, if you're building such a tall building, you're building a commercial building? And so theoretically, those people were gone, like if, if it's a commercial building downtown. Most people actually are not in the building after six o'clock. And so, but now, most buildings that were building downtown of that size actually have apartments above the tenth foot of the building. And so at that point, you actually have forty feet or four floors of, of people looking into, into the building. And so I, I just think that, that's, that's the, I think, um that's my interpretation of, of what, of what you're talking about, about the historicalness of this, of.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, we've always had residential in, you know, multi-story buildings, so I don't know that that's definitely the link, I think, um and, you know, i- I think it's valid to have the conversation about whether or not, A, you know, maybe you just come up with a setback at the edge. Um and not have it reduced, or that the, there does have to be a landscaped, you know, a treed landscape buffer and not a substitute, a fence is not a substitute, so you could do that.
Yeah, you rationalize trees really, and they can difference up. Trees can make a difference up to thirty, forty feet maybe someday, but, but still, I'm, I'm just marveling at the at how modest these setbacks are, you know, honestly, um. And I hate it when people say this, but I will say, when I uh was on the Planning Commission in Minnesota, we, we worked really hard on setbacks because of these same issues. And, and we got much more aggressive than this. And I would love to see us get more aggressive, frankly.
What does that mean aggressively?
Means uh, uh for, for a seventy-foot building, um that this, the bu- the boundary setback should be increased. That the first step back should be lower than fifty feet. And that there maybe should be a second step back at a height, because what we were hearing was yes, that, that, that people were really upset about the idea of, of apartments looking into their houses. And, you know, these are res- I, I wouldn't want that and I, I wouldn't ask that of anyone.
But at the same time, I just, like, that was advocate.
Let me, let me just finish my, so, so there's, there's that point about, about these are now apartment buildings and, and not commercial buildings. And we need to think about that. And also, I, I'm just uh I, we heard a lot about people just feeling like, whoa, suddenly there's gonna be this thing towering over our residential district. And I just uh, very concerned about that. Um I think that big buildings can be built, but they should be stepped back so that they don't have the visual impact that, that they would otherwise have.
So let me just, oh.
Can I just ask for one piece of clarification and then hear from you and, and from Sam as well? So uh I think you said, I just want to confirm that all of the uh uh Gateway and Side Street districts abut are surrounded by URC?
Mhm.
Okay, and in URC, the maximum height is fifty feet and the setback is minimum's ten feet is, setback is ten feet, okay, just wanted to confirm that that was the case, thank you.
Just one more quick comment, um if, I know you are always very busy, but you've got great GP, GIS staff. So if, for our next discussion, if we could actually see where the, a, a map of where the, the meeting of these districts with residential are throughout the city, just so we can get an idea of the scope of what we're talking, what you just did was terrific, but I was, I'm like.
I mean, that's it for central business, is what.
Didn't we just see that?
Yeah, how, what are you looking for that's different than what?
I just wanna see it in graphic form so I can stare at it and look at it and.
You can doubt that what Carolyn was showing us on our screen is downloadable to Google Earth. So.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'll try to do that.
If we can, I kinda like dug into that on my own, like when I, when I first joined, found it like on the city website somewhere.
Yeah.
But maybe if you just even like pass that out to the board and we can like load it into our Google Earth on our own.
Yep. And we also have PDFs of it and when it was pa- I mean, we, and it's a little bit clearer, clearer and more saturated. But yes, we can um, we can do that. Um, yeah, so I do wanna sort of circle back about that issue about, because URC does allow fifty-foot height. So I think part, what I heard in that conversation was maybe the edges, the particular parcels that abut the URC, maybe that's where you have either step backs or maybe the height limit is different for the abutting parcels, and maybe you're making like maybe it's even a category in this, you, you know, central business side district and gateway where those parcels that immediately abut, their heights are different, so we might have to make another district. Um because you can't treat the same, you know, properties in the same zone differently.
But to, to play devil's, I mean, I'm not sure, you know, if someone, like the someone could build a, a single-family home with three stories, right next to what was a uh, a little, a little ranch, like by right, and I'm not sure that's much different. I mean, well, no, I'm, think it's like, I mean, that's the right. It's like, we're not, we're not talking about, like, you can only build a tent next to people's homes. But, and, you know, if you need that kind of level of privacy, maybe you need to live in the woods and not the city. Uh but, you know, like, you can't be upset of traffic when there's, like, the only reason, like go down to downtown Springfield where there's no traffic and you'd be like, well, this really sucks, you know, for downtown Springfield. Um, you know, like, that's, that's part of the reality of, of city living. And um, I'm not, again, I'm, I guess I'm arguing both sides, but I, I, I'm just not sure that um, not sure what the, the point of, I mean, this started with talking about the fence. I do think that, that, that it does make sense to, like, if you're building residential above, you know, maybe it has to do with what they're building. So if they're building residential above commercial, then, then at that point, the, the setback increases because by definition, you're actually putting in uh you're sort of allowing windows to see into someone else's house. So if it was just a office building, for example, again, where they presumably, the people are gonna leave at six o'clock, I mean, that's not being built here, not being built anywhere, but, but that, the idea is, is that we're, that above a certain height, next to this place, that's where you have to have a setback if it's gonna be residential home, housing.
But those gonna, I mean, the, the thing about form-based code is that it's flexible uses, so this year it might be X use, next year it might be office, you know, so I think that should be taken into consideration as well. Um, so, you know, I think.
Can I just say that I, like, I appreciate the logic that um abutting urban residential C, the maximum height is fifty feet, which matches what the maximum height in residential C is. And then above that height, you have to step back, like that makes sense to me, like in the building. There has to be a step back in the building up to the seventy feet. And I also like that we increase the setback when you go above fifty feet. So that all kind of makes sense, but at the same time, when you're building an apartment building like this, it isn't just like a house on part of a lot that's fifty feet tall, it's like an entire wall on your entire property line that's fifty feet tall. And I think that feels different to people, so I'm wondering if maybe matching the maximum height of urban residential C isn't the thing to do, maybe it should be like up to forty feet. Then the building needs to have a step back and you increase the uh setback distance from ten to twenty feet or something like that, just to keep the scale down because it is like an entire wall on your property line.
And just to clarify something, currently the only setback is on the front of lot, so we're talking about exploring we're talking about adding a setback to the side of the lot that abuts the residential district, right? Cause like, amending the, the setback otherwise isn't gonna do the neighbor any good.
No, it's on the side, so there's a buffer section that create, so the, the front set, there isn't a front setback, like there's more of a build two.
Uh, oh, I'm talking about the upper story, I thought we were talking about the upper story setback, where the building sets back
Yes.
ten feet after it goes fifty or fifty-five feet, whatever. But that's only happening on the front of the, the building that abuts the street.
Correct.
But I'm, so I'm thinking about the Phillips Place example, like the Holly Street development.
Yep.
And we heard from a neighbor on Phillips Place who was concerned about this massive building that's going up and they're gonna be able to like peer out, you know, from those apartments into his windows. Okay, like the six-foot screening minimum, whatever, like if we amend that and make it taller, there's still gonna be a giant wall, as Chris was just saying, right on his property line. So I feel like that is the side of the property that we need to look into maybe adding provisions to have us, um, the building step back on, on that side as well.
So instead of the front.
Well, in addition, in addition to the front, maybe.
So I, thank you for bringing that up because that project did eventually have that, but I'd forgotten that that was actually voluntary on the part of the applicant, um in response to some of the concerns that had been raised by the neighbors, so they did add in. And then with that kind of patio space on the side, so at least on one side of the building that abutted the, the Phillips Place side of it.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, sorry for confusing the two conversations, but that's just whatever.
No, Cameron, that's what I thought I was talking about, so thank you for clarifying, that's exactly what I'm looking for, what you just said.
Yeah, in fact, I think we, if anything, we should emphasize sides of buildings that abut residential dwellings, not, not.
Yeah, abutting residential only is what I'm thinking.
Um that, that, uh may, there may be circumstances where a setback on the street would really have a.
I, I like it on the street too for just the, of architecturally breaking up the mass of a building that, you know, is
Yep.
the, the face of the building that everyone's gonna see, but I think, yeah, it would be not just for the neighbors who are concerned, um particularly on this border, right? Where, where residential meets one of these districts we're talking about.
One of the things I find myself sitting here thinking is, you know, when you do this and we create additional step backs, I'm not saying I'm against them, but every time you do that, you're, one potential outcome is that you're losing units, right? And so how many places, I mean, we looked at that map. There's a lot of places where these districts are abutting, so there's gonna be a lot of parcels that are affected by this change. And if you think about that over, you know, the entire city, that's, you know, potentially a lot of units that we're losing um for this. That being said, I think a lot of the tenor of the conversation, I, I will, I will say the spirit of the conversation has been how can we get housing built that's integrated in a more sensitive way? And perhaps this is a way to do it, but with trade-offs, like losing a little bit of housing.
So what Rich, what you just brought up and I kinda dismissed, saying I like how the front, um, I, I like having the setback in the front too. I wonder if there's examples in other cities, um, where if we implement something on the side, so a setback on the side where, you know, that equivalent is uh brought to the, is forgiven in the front, so as to not use like, or to not lose even more units. Um so if we were removing, you know, seventy feet of linear feet on one side of the building and we added that to the front of the building in the form of units, I don't, I'd be able to draw this better than I'm speaking it, uh, but, yeah.
Well, you know, what's interesting is when the building behind, over there, um the Valley CDC building that um behind City Hall that's going to go up, that's central business side street. And so they were, they came to this, you know, when they realized they had to design a ten-foot step back after fifty feet, it was, it was really, there were really units that got lost there. Um, it's going right next to this building in the step, you know, the steps that come up to the back parking lot, there will be a building that rises out of the crumbling stairs.
Definitely.
God, the cost of that must be.
These, these, you know, these ideas will have a financial impact on the developer, no, you can't argue with that. And, and there's all, you know, that's what regulation is all about, is finding the trade-offs and, and hitting the, the sweet spot where the benefit outweighs the cost, but, but uh, we need to work on it to do that. Um, you know, it'd be great to have some analyses, again, I, you know, you guys don't have the, the staff to do fancy analyses, but it would be, it'd be really interesting, yeah, but, but Jen, to, to Janice's point, for example. If you take the number of uh new projects anticipated over the next ten years, um just whatever ballpark you have, and you calculate the, you know, the average size of those and then you calculate, you can actually get it, what, what, you know, ballpark of what the financial impact would be. Those kinds of analyses would be helpful to inform this discussion for me anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could do a unit impact, I don't know if we could do a financial analysis, um especially during these crazy times. Um, so um, it's inter- I mean, like, so I guess and I may have misread, but it sounded like the board kind of wanted to have this open conversation about these things, which is why I didn't present anything to you in any text or anything, cause I didn't, so I think it's good. It would be helpful, it's helpful to hear this so that that can be then incorporated into some trial language that then we could bring back to you, um, you know, as further discussion. So um I'm, I just took, on this piece, unless you wanna have more discussion about this, I took, you know, thinking about um step backs at, on parcels that abut the URC district um at um either starting at forty feet instead of fifty feet and but going around the entire perimeter of the building. Um, and that maybe something increases setbacks after fifty feet from ten feet, or do you wanna keep it at twenty? Um, I mean, that's a question that could also, you don't have to decide that tonight, but this is the stuff that, you know, I've written down. And then it sounds like maybe just jettison the fence idea, just to make that landscaping.
But, but also play with other heights, I mean, I
Yep.
Something about, you know, ground thirty, fifty, seventy are, are nice increments that, you know, you could, you could step back at each of those heights and end up with a much more palatable impact on whatever's over there.
Mhm, okay.
Anecdotally, are developers putting fences for that requirement? Are they doing landscape massing, like tree and shrub?
They're almost uniformly throughout the city, I think, when there's an opportunity to reduce the buffer, they're doing a combination of like fewer plantings and a fence, because the fence is sort of immediate.
Yeah, fences make, fences make good neighbors, people like that.
Mhm.
Um.
I think plantings also have a problem of, you can't really put big trees, if you're reducing from a twenty-foot setback to a ten-foot setback, how big of a tree can you really plant in the area you have now, right? It's gonna be up, up against the building. So it really, it doesn't make a lot of sense, you kinda need the twenty feet, if you're gonna plant a tree anymore.
Yeah, I, I think it's kinda hard to know what to do, there's a part of me that's like, well, should we be requiring some kind of a buffer and a twenty-foot setback period for these transitional plots, but then maybe not um require the step backs above a certain height, like, I mean, there's so many different ways that you could approach it, like, would that be a way? I mean, with those ten feet, you're also losing units, but might that be, like, I don't know enough to be able to know how that would compare. And it's probably hard to say broadly. And it's probably hard to say broadly speaking, cause it's gonna depend on the particulars of what's being developed and the site and so forth, but. Um, I I guess.
There's nothing magical about twenty feet either.
Right.
It could be more than that, uh, you know, um, those, those ground feet are what have a much bigger impact. Than the, you know, something at thirty feet for someone on the ground, obviously.
Yeah, I'm just like the Holly Street lot, for example, that's a pretty large empty lot to be where it is. Um, but, you know, pulling in twenty feet on all, thirty feet on all sides would.
Yeah.
Furiously reduce the size of that project, and that's big compared to other things in the city, so I'm not, I'm not. I'm not sure about making it even more stringent, but.
This devil's having it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, lots of different ways to approach it, but it's just seems like every, you know, all of us are interested in making that. Those transitional zones, um, making the transition gentler without sacrificing more than we have to.
If, I mean, if we care about the cost of this building and we want these buildings to happen. But more important than the setbacks is rolling back these bizarre, like, further stretch code. Like requirements for these buildings which cost so much, like, cost so much money.
Stretch code.
For the.
Energy code.
The energy code. I mean, that's what's costing, I mean, I.
Oh, really?
It's, it's, it is, the, the amount of money that I have put into tape. Around the home that I'm doing right now is thousand, is a thousand plus dollars. It's just not like, and those are the same, like, if, like. I mean, it just seemed like where you could have the setback and then. And that might limit the number of buildings. These people need to have those number of units. Because the code, the, 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 the environmental codes. Or what, what would you?
Energy code.
The energy codes in North Hampton are so. They're, they're, they're so strict and fly in the face of. Years and years and years of building experience. Um, I mean, it's great. We need to have these places more, you know, tighter and all that kind of stuff, but.
Are you building new or are you comparing to new or retrofit?
Both, because what, if, because, you know, the, like, the home I'm doing now, like. You ha, we had to gut it, so by definition, it hits that, that the number, like, you have to.
Yep.
You have to go to that point. And so, you know, and and it's just not. And like, I just don't believe that, like, you know, there's. Like, as a, a, a more, uh, good example that I, I had a, I had a, I built a, a property. In a remodel of the property in East Hampton. And at the time, you had to have an R twenty-one versus an R nineteen. And the difference between an R twenty-one and R nineteen was for, for insulating this house. Was two thousand dollars. Like, I could have literally taken two thousand dollars. Like, the difference in what you're gonna get worth R nineteen and R twenty-one is not two thousand dollars. Worth savings.
It's just, Sam, I would, I would take from what you're saying, actually, two things. One is to temper Jenna's comment that, about the cost to the developer. Just put it in context and remember that there are other costs that, that.
One hundred percent, you know.
Far away.
I think you could do the setbacks.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, it makes sense, you know, I think of myself, if I'm developing a property. For, and given the cost of it, the people that I'm going to be trying to buy my properties care a lot about privacy. Um, and. Uh, so I think that there's, there's a world where people, where a developer might be okay with a setback. Of this larger, especially if the cost, of the cost of building in North Hampton wasn't so much. And it's more than the, the town next door. So anyways, that's my.
We're talking about sort of building setbacks location. The other thing that I think would be important to discuss for this gateway inside districts are. Um, clarification of the language around the special permit trigger, um, or footprint. So right now, it says any footprint over ten thousand square feet, uh, require, actually, I should read the language. Triggers a special permit. The intention of that, however, was about a single use. Um, because it's carryover from, again, we had the, um, general business district. We had highway business district, we had entrance business. And there was a concern at the time that those districts were created, that a large-scale retailer. Of the Walmart scale or Home Depot scale would come in and try to buy a piece of property in one of these districts. And so the special permit trigger was set at ten thousand square feet to try to prevent that. And I think the language is not clear that it's, um, it really should be about. Sort of those large-scale single users as opposed to on apartment building, which is multi, multifamily housing. You're going to have a ten thousand square foot footprint. I mean, that's just, so it just creates another barrier. And the special permit criteria aren't really set up to address, oh, your multifamily housing is, is. Um, fifteen thousand square foot footprint. Why is that so special that the planning board has to sort of, um, generate, you know, a permit decision around that? When the original goal was really to try to ultimately make a barrier, a burden and a barrier. For a large-scale retailer. Um, so I think that language should be tweaked in there. To clarify that it's for, you know, a single user, um, of a space or something like that.
More, is there anything else that folks wanna say on these topics before we move on to some of the other potential adjustments? That Carolyn raised at the beginning?
I thought, I saw a public comment, they were talking about first-floor parking garages, which also seemed to. You know, get the public's attention and the, the two recent apartment buildings we looked at. Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Yes, I think that was on Carolyn's list and there was, there was another comment, uh, from about a separate issue that folks may wanna. Talk about, um, but sure, we could move on to garages unless there was anything else.
Sure, so, um, this relates more to the design criteria of buildings. So when you're building a structure, the design criteria in all the districts. Um, re, you know, are such that you have to have windows and spacing. And, um, a transparency on that ground floor level. Um, it didn't really, those don't really speak to the design of, uh, covered parking, so parking garage. So I think it would make sense to actually include, um, some caveats or carve-outs. For parking garages that are certainly part of a multi-story project. Um, because we don't have anything, as opposed to restricting parking garages altogether. Um, and of, and that's of course because we, A, allow parking and surface parking. Um, just big, open parking lots, I think are, um, contrary to the goals of the. Um, form-based code in trying to create structures and, um, and pedestrians. Scale environments that are vibrant, so I think you could argue walking past, you know, a huge parking lot. Um, has a very different feel from a structured garage, and we obviously allow parking. So, um, I don't think we should throw up barriers to create covered parking. And it's much more efficient use of land, obviously, if you're, but if you've got uses above the parking. Instead of just having half your site dedicated to complete surface parking. So I think it's, um, would be helpful for the board to have some criteria that speak to structured parking or covered parking.
Agreed. So is that the kind of thing that your office could develop? Or there was the, I don't remember the name of the outlet that you, uh, outfit that you worked with when developing the.
Yeah, doesn't like, or yeah, we can, we can pull stuff together, cause there's lots of examples of, um.
Yeah, I think that would be really helpful, cause I mean, yes, we saw on both on State Street and, or I guess Elm Street and, and Holly and Phillips. That that was a pretty major concern, understandably so.
Yeah.
So if we have more guidance and so applicants have more guidance as well about how to integrate that.
Yeah.
Uh, along with, um, you know, thoughtful design, that'd be really helpful.
Yeah, I think we went, we went back and forth a lot on the State Street one, on the parking, right, and the design of it. So I think if they had some standards, um, before the design, that probably would have been helpful.
Carolyn, the other thing, anything else on the garages? Looking forward to hearing more, I think is the upshot of that one.
So this, you, you, you mentioned this, I, I missed this one about the solar over parking.
Oh, yeah, solar, yeah.
And so do we want to also address solar issues with, with the same discussion?
Yes, and I mean, my recommendation would be, don't trigger site plan for that if it's behind a structure. Um, obviously, if it's on the street, I think that's different. You might wanna have a review of how it's, um, you know, interfacing with, um, the sidewalk. But I think there are instances, like the one that you saw, where if it's, you know, a parking lot at the back. Then why does that need to come to the line?
Carolyn, are there height restrictions on accessory structures abutting residential properties? In the central business side street? Cause I, I just worry about, um, solar canopy that, you know, the orientation with the sun. Means that the high side of the panel is abutting the residential property and it could be like twenty feet high or something.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we have, I mean, we could come up with a standard. Um, of height, and I mean, twenty feet is the standard height for an accessory structure. In the residential districts anyway, so, um, I don't, you know, maybe if it's.
But there must be a setback for that accessory structure in the residential district, right?
Um, four feet, yeah. Um, so we could do a similar setback or something like that for a canopy structure.
Oh, that's all? Four-foot setback for a twenty-foot structure?
Yeah.
Wow.
Can you remind me, so I'm thinking about this project that came forward recently, was it on Trumbull?
Um, yeah.
And so they were proposing to put solar over their parking lot. And so we're not talking about, you know, a small shed, we're talking about a pretty large array. Um, and the abutters came with some concerns about sightlines and screening and lighting and so forth. Um, are there, can, can you remind me what the rules are for accessory structures in terms of open space? And I mean, how, what I'm trying to get at is, yeah, if there's only a four-foot setback on a twenty-foot tall thing. And you've got a big, you've got your house in your parking lot and that's kind of it, or you're gonna end up with some huge solar array. Um, that's, th- then the abutters have no kind of recourse to express any concerns about. Like, what, how, how big and bad could they get?
Well, I think, um, the other thing to think about is how big and bad is asphalt. And so you're just covering asphalt. Um, and given that, um. You, you know, the, I mean, we could look at, in the side street district. I, I mean, I think if it's comparable setbacks to what's in the residential district. Um. I, I don't, and so getting back to your open space thing, if it's covering asphalt, it's already not open space, right? So, um, but I think it would only make sense to have a similar setback. As what the abutting residential district has, as opposed to having more, especially if the heights are the same. Because on the other side of the fence, you know, someone with a single-family house could put a canopy structure. In the same height and setback.
Except they're limited by their open space, right? So their canopy couldn't be as, as big.
Well, like, uh, I mean, they are, but if you're covering parking, that's not open space anyway. Right? So this is really just a scenario of a solar canopy that's covering parking should be.
But in the, in the side street, isn't it, is there, I, I thought there isn't really any open space requirement. Maybe I'm wrong.
It's just plantings. There's not a percentage. But what I'm guessing is a solar canopy over parking is not, is, is just. You're not adding any impervious surface because you're covering an existing asphalt lot.
I, right, I, I don't think our concern is the impervious surface, though, it's the, the site of the thing over the impervious surface. And so in a residential zone, they couldn't have as much impervious surface, so they couldn't have as much thing in the sightline over the impervious surface. Do you know what I mean? It isn't a, it isn't an impervious surface issue, but it's a sight of this large thing.
There is a different factor for a solar canopy for the neighbor or the pedestrian than there is asphalt, but.
But you can't, then, I mean, like, then you'd need, then you're saying you want design standards for something over X height. And then are you saying no to a solar array that, um, you know?
I mean, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other, I'm just saying that it isn't quite apples to apples. Because the residential district could never have as big a solar array as the side street district could have. Because the side street district is allowed to have more impervious area, therefore more parking, therefore more solar canopy covering parking.
Although.
That's all.
Someone could build a, a garage in that space, right? By right. And so what's the difference?
Yeah.
But I, I, I'll come back, I mean, this is not the end of the conversation, obviously, I can. And then we can actually look at examples where it's abutting residential zones and, um, you could look at that.
I feel like part of the message of all of this should be, like, home buyers, be aware. If, if you're on one of these abutting parcels, like, think about what that, study this and think about what that could mean. And if you're comfortable with it, awesome, great, but just, you know.
Wait, isn't that always a warning whenever you buy property?
Yes.
Yeah, we hope that, I mean, seriously, we hope that realtors point out to their buyers, that, you know, you are adjacent to. This different district and consequently, these possibilities could occur. I mean, that's one thing that struck me about Phillips was that those people that we heard from. And I was very moved by their stories and, and, and I'm not diminishing their concerns and their impacts. But they, I hope they move there with eyes wide open, um, to the potential for this kind of thing to happen.
I've never heard of a Realtor talking about the zoning next door.
Yeah.
I highly doubt they knew that.
Huh, okay.
I feel like.
Trying to close that deal as possible.
Yeah.
And like my number one personal life takeaway, being on the planning board, is that if you're ever buying a house, you should.
Yeah, do your own due diligence.
Indeed.
Yeah.
No matter where you are, I have to say.
That's what I, that's what I learned learning a D, working a D E P. Know where you're buying.
Surprised that, um, given the amount of work and attention and interest. In particularly in the, um, you know, the CB side district that we've seen that more people aren't here to participate in this conversation. But.
Well, let's hope that as it gets more prominently on the agenda. Well, let's hope that, as it gets more prominently on the agenda.
Right, with actual proposals and so forth, yeah.
Can I ask where the eight Trumbull Road discussion kind of landed or led to last time? Uh, at the last meeting? Approval. Cool.
But it's just an added time and, and it's something we want to encourage, right?
Definitely.
We can bring you back to the good times, tell you all about it.
So Carolyn, I think we got through the thing that you had noted at the beginning. And, um, we had gotten that one comment about garages, we've talked about that. I also wanted to just address and, and raise for discussion if people are interested in it. The other public comment that came in regarding kind of clarification between guidelines, the design guidelines that are mandatory versus advisory, as well as sort of clarifying language around waivers. Carolyn, I don't know if you have anything particularly to add about this, or any reactions, suggestions?
Yeah, I mean, yes, we use the terms, um, we use a variety of terms. I can tell you from the beginning that we wanted to have, create a cookbook, said, here's how you, if you do this, you're gonna get your permit. And yes, you might need site plan, because we want to make sure everything is functioning correctly. There are some instances where special permits are appropriate, because in that particular location, maybe that use isn't the right thing, or the way you've done it isn't correct. Um, but for the most part, here's the design book. If you do this, you're getting your permit. You still need to go to the planning board, but you're getting a permit. But recognizing that it's hard to create a very detailed cookbook that fits every single scenario in the city with windy streets and funky buildings and, you know. And so conceptually, at the front end, there was always, it was always important to have a relief valve, because, and not to say, you have to do this and you'll get a permit, and if you don't do it, there's no permit. Because there's so, such a variety. And so I think, um, I will definitely go back and look at all these, and we can, I can highlight them for you. And maybe that's the best thing to do, is sort of highlight that as the next time we go around, and then you can see where these, you know, points are raised, and, um, yes, we use different terms, and there are certain standards. I would say, for example, we don't want any new driveways in the central business core district. That is the primary walking space, no more driveways, no more curb cuts on Main Street, all of that. And so, that's a standard, that's not waivable. Um, but there are other things about design, and, you know, that I think that there should be some flexibility, because again, we have a lot of, you know, we don't have uniformity anywhere, in terms of the layout of the land, the law, the parcels. You know, the buildings themselves, and so the idea of, behind it is not to be punitive and say, yeah, you don't need this, forget it, see you later. But we want to facilitate as much good design as we can get, and not make it an incredible burden for people, because already the design standards are a little bit more than what you can, that you need to even try to do in some other surrounding towns.
Was the euphemism you just used, waivable?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to get it on.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That's good.
It would, it would just be nice to get around some of these situations where there's a contentious project, and, you know, council chambers is full of people who definitely aren't NIMBYs, but we know that the project just isn't quite right for, for where they live. And then they kind of look, comb through for any kind of, anything to hold on to. So it would just be nice to make sure all the language kind of meshes.
Yeah, to that, to Chris's point, there are places where it's very arm-wavy and conceptual, and it doesn't really serve much
Right.
Benefit.
Absolutely. I'd like to tackle those as well, elsewhere in the code. I mean, and it's really meant to make sure that it's, everybody understands what the playing field is, right? So there's not, so the residents know, and the applicants know, and the planning board knows. It's not, you know, and, and because we all, because the community, you know, has established that certain things that they want, and so I think that it's, makes sense for the code to reflect those things. But make a, a very clear path for applicants. That comes after the election.
I, I get, bear with me, I'm not sure I'm gonna articulate this quite the way that I want, but I feel like one of the one of the things that we're seeing, I think this comment reflects some of this, I think some of these, you know, big, more contentious hearings that we've had, reflects some of this, that I think part of the what I see is the kind of dissatisfaction frustrations of members of the public who come, is they feel like they're either seeing standards that they feel aren't being met, and they're not sure why, or they want to change the standards but feel like they can't do it, so it's like, we have all the power to say when the standards should and shouldn't be met, and that they see us as sort of like waving that around arbitrarily. And obviously, we, we do actually have the power to set those standards and decide when to waive them, like, that's not just a made-up thing, that is actually our, you know, our right and our role. But I think the more that we can clarify and delineate that, even if they don't like it, hopefully, it will maybe ease those conversations a little bit, so that it just doesn't feel as um, I'm not saying it is arbitrary and capricious, it is not, that's not how we make decisions, but I understand that sometimes it can feel that way, that we can just do whatever we want, but the public can't. So, anyway, I'm just agreeing with what you're saying, that, you know, finding ways to sort of tighten things up and clarify the pathway for everybody involved, I think can only make our conversations better.
Yeah, and, and I'll add note to self, all of us, that when we have those contentious decisions to make, we try to articulate why we're making, not just a vote, but actually, we should force ourselves to try to say something about why we're making this decision, so that the public doesn't think we're just being dummies.
I mean, I think the next sort of a parallel thing to that is there, um, you all hear frustrations from residents who come to hearings, and there's a site plan, and the use is allowed, and you're looking at the technical details. And so the planning, so the residents say, well, why are you having a hearing if you're gonna just approve this plan? Well, because the use is allowed. And so maybe, and this is, goes on to your list that you were creating of things, you know, it might be appropriate to think about, are there things that are really technical and really should be done at a staff level? So it doesn't raise the level of frustration or anticipation from the members of the public, who would come, they're saying, this is a public hearing, I got a notice in the mail, and yet, and I hate this project, and yet you're telling me you're going to approve it. And so I think that unnecessarily raises tensions, and I think there are some things that are, you know, very, pretty straightforward, and then don't take any discretionary analysis, that maybe we could take that off, and so. But that's another bigger conversation.
That makes a lot of sense to me, and I wonder if as an interim step, and I think we've already made some steps in this direction, but perhaps there are even more where we can do more to sort of lay out every single time. Here is our purview with a site plan versus a special permit, here's what we're looking at on this particular project. These elements are not under scrutiny at all, because they're allowed, I mean, sometimes we do that, but sometimes we don't make it as explicit, and it might be helpful to just kind of set that shared expectation every time, every hearing.
And, and one trick to doing that is unfortunately turning to Carolyn, saying, please explain what our, what our authority is, is here. And, and I think we should never hesitate to do that at any decision, so, because there's different people in the audience, and they haven't all heard it before, we have, but, but, um, we're, we're talking to the public in those cases. And, and the other thing I'll add is that unfortunately, part of our job is just to have a thick skin and take some of that abuse and, uh, let the public vent, and because they're being done too. And we're doing it, and that's part of our job, but nonetheless.
I, I do want to recognize there is a member of the public here. Would they like to make any public comment? No, okay. Um, I'm not
Are we there yet?
We're, we're quite there, I think we're close. Hold on. Carolyn, you put minutes on the agenda, did you send minutes?
Did not send.
Okay. The only other, I'm sorry, I did these in reverse order, but that's fine. The other thing was any other items not anticipated at the time of posting. Chris, this is mostly for you and also for Carolyn, I cannot be here on the thirteenth.
Okay, I'll check my calendar.
It's my official public announcement.
And we know it's not your birthday.
It's not, you're right, it's not my birthday. All right, anything else, or that motion again?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and we're gonna do a roll call. Rich?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you, everybody, thank you, Carolyn, this is great.
Yeah, good discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Later.
Bye.
Whoops. Stop recording.